Regular council meeting on this, the 24th of April 2018. I'll go ahead and call this to order. I'll just give a... In just a few moments, we'll have the invitation for citizens for public comment. And this evening, anyone that wishes to speak on the plastic bag restriction ordinance, the ordinance related to special use of permits for city parks, or the ordinance amending the sign code ordinance, please hold your comments. And when we have those discussions, we will have a section for you to come up and share your thoughts. So it will be relevant to our discussion. And then anyone that would like to speak on those three topics or any other topic before the council tonight, we have sign-up forms at the back of our... At the hall, and then those need to be brought over to Melissa that can bring those up. So I think what we'll do now is we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. And Remi, would you lead us?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Remi.
Thank you.
This evening, we have two councillors that have excused absences as they're traveling. And so Council President Minke and Councillor Rudin are out of town and out of... One is out of the country. So that takes us to an invitation for citizens for public comment. And again, anyone that would like to speak on any topic other than a topic that's already on the agenda, and I indicated that we'll give you that opportunity to talk when we're talking about those ordinances this evening. You can speak on... And so you may not speak on any matter that's in litigation or a quasi-judicial land use matter or any matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. And so this evening, we will limit your comments to three minutes per person. And so we would... Caroline O'Brien? Caroline, if you'd come up.
Thank you. My name is Caroline O'Brien. I live at 1591 Southwest Wright Street in McMinnville. Thank you for letting us have the public forum. Sunday afternoon, I was at the Public Library, and I witnessed a hate crime. A man who was threatening to knock women around. Monday afternoon, I read in the paper, some guy who's angry at women drove his car into a crowd of women in Toronto. So I have found out that the situation that happened Sunday afternoon, a man was being abusive to a librarian, and then proceeded to talk about knocking women around, and he had been in gangs and all this stuff. I called the police and reported him. I wrote down everything I could remember, walked in yesterday afternoon, talked to the officer, presented a written statement about what had happened. And I spoke to the librarian today. Apparently, the librarian can only ban someone like that for up to 90 days from the library, because that's just the way their system is. I would like the city of McMinnville to think about legislation to protect our librarians. No one should have to worry about going to work. No one should have to sit there and listen to a man threatened to assault someone simply because she is female. What had happened is he was being abusive, and a librarian walked over and very politely asked him to lower his voice, called her a bitch, proceeded to say, "I don't have a problem knocking women around." And he did leave, and the police, I guess, picked him up for something else. This man has been arrested over 25 times since 2013. He has been arrested for... Oh, let's see here. He got all kinds of stuff. Menacing harassment, theft, assault, and strangulation. He shouldn't even be in the library. So I thought I'd start on the municipal level and see if I can get McMinnville, Oregon, to make a public statement that we will not tolerate that. I'm going to go to the county commissioners and see what we can do on a county level. And I'm contacting all of my state representatives. Done. No more. It has to stop. And we can't wait for everybody else to stand up. We have to do it on the local level, and then on the county, and then on the state. But I'm not going to wait till this guy gets behind the wheel of a car and drives it into people on a street corner because he's angry a woman told him to lower his voice. I'm not going to have it anymore. And I'm asking you, please, make a statement for the city of McMinnville to the world. We are not going to tolerate this. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Caroline. Appreciate your insight and your comments. Okay. Okay, that's it for general comments. The city attorney reminded me that we will not be taking any comments this evening on the sign ordinance in that that is a land use matter and would be held for public hearing at a later date.
If the council chooses to schedule a public hearing on that matter, then we can advertise that, and you can hold that at your next meeting. But that would be at the discretion of the council.
Thank you, David. Okay. We have a couple of proclamations this evening. The first one's going to be kind of a fun one. Could we have Joya? And I see Rhonda back there. I don't know if... For the last couple of years, we've had an opportunity to participate in Lemonade Day. And the proclamation will give us a little insight into that. But this is done through the Chamber of Commerce. So thanks for being here, ladies. Our proclamation, whereas Lemonade Day is a fun, free experimental learning program that launched in Houston, Texas in 2007, and has grown from 2,700 kids in one city to 2,000 kids in over 35 cities across America and Canada. Whereas there are 200 kids in McMinnville and surrounding communities who will be learning how to be young entrepreneurs by opening and operating their own businesses, a lemonade stand, and whereas the community business leaders are supporting and encouraging these young entrepreneurs to be brave and to do big things. And whereas, since its inception, Lemonade Day has provided access to the experience of business ownerships to youth from all walks of life who learn lifelong business skills and principles, which, while learning how to make money, where they are encouraged to spend a little, save a little, and share a little. And whereas the mission of Lemonade Day is to empower today's youth to become tomorrow's entrepreneurs. Now therefore, I Scott A. Hill, Mayor of the city of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May 5, 2018, as Lemonade Day in McMinnville. And we urge all citizens to recognize and encourage the efforts of our kids as they learn about becoming young entrepreneurs while they open and operate their own businesses. In witness thereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of McMinnville to be affixed this the 24th day of April 2008. Signed, Scott A. Hill. Thank you. As we've done in other years, we're going to be out and visiting and trying cookies and lemonade. And I'll bring much more money this year than I did last year because I wasn't able to... I wasn't able to participate at the level I wanted to. So we're going to be doing that on Saturday and on the 5th of May. So again, thank you for the support of the chamber. This is a great endeavor.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks, Rhonda. We have another proclamation this evening. One is a city that we're very proud of. Chuck, if you'd come up. We have Arbor Day, and so I'll read the proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agricultural that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil, clean the air by absorbing 45 pounds of carbon dioxide each year per tree, produce life-giving oxygen, and provides vital habitat for wildlife. Whereas trees can moderate the average temperature in a city by 10 degrees and can cut individual household heating and cooling costs by up to 25%. Whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of our business areas, and beautify our communities. And whereas the city of McMinnville is celebrating its 21st year of a Certified Tree City USA, as recognized by the Arbor Day Foundation. And whereas in honor of Arbor Day in Oregon, 30 new red maple trees were planted along Highway 18 with much help from the community organizations, Trees for McMinnville and the McMinnville Sunrise Rotary. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renew. Now therefore, I Scott A. Hill, Mayor of the city of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim April 27, 2018, as Arbor Day in the city of McMinnville. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of this and future generations. In witness thereof, I have herefore set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of McMinnville to be attached this the 24th day of April 2018. Signed, Scott A. Hill, Mayor. This is really significant. 21 years. And you know, that's one of the hallmarks of our community is trees. I've told my story a couple of times, how I've started to go to the landscaping committee's monthly committee meeting, and I'm intrigued by it. And so I think I'm going on my seventh month of not missing that committee because we're talking about trees and we're talking about beautification of our community. And so we have volunteers, we have staff, and we have citizens that are all involved in this process. And so again, we're excited to recognize Arbor Day and to participate. And I'll tell you, in our discussions, I see we're going to have more volunteer efforts in beautifying and doing the things that we need to do in the community. Any words of...
Yeah, I'll share just a couple of things. So I got a few photos to share of the planting event that we did earlier this month. So you'll see, we have the Tree City USA signs at the entrances of all the main entrances into the city. They updated the signs with our 21-year sticker this year. So there they are, updating the signs. We got a new flag, too, from Arbor Day, which flies out across the street over at the fire department. We'll be putting up the new flag on Arbor Day this Friday. So we'll be raising that. The tree planting event I mentioned was on March 31st. Trees for McMinnville really kind of spearheaded this. They do it every year, and they maintain trees all throughout the city. And the Sunrise Rotary helped with volunteers as well. And they planted 30 new trees out along Highway 18 on the west end of town, kind of just past Lowe's. So here's just some photos. It was a good group of people and families that helped out. Went pretty quick because all the holes were already dug for us, so that was nice. And Council President Minke was there. She probably skipped today so she wouldn't have to be seen up on the screen. There's me and her planting a tree. Just a couple more photos. So next time you're out, just check them out. They're on your left-hand side as you're going out of town on Highway 18.
Chuck, thank you. Thanks, everyone. That brings us to the point in the agenda where we have our consent agenda. And this evening, we have a number of things on our consent agenda. We have the consideration of the minutes of the March 13, 2018 work session and the regular city council meeting from March 21, 2018, and the special called work session on that day. We have for consideration a request by Winery OLCC License from Rose and Fern Cellars LLC, located at 2515 Northeast Orchard Avenue, Number 3. We have consideration for a request on Winery OLCC License from Kendrick LLC, DBA Domain Glenon, located at 925 Northeast 7th Street. We have consideration to request a full on-premise commercial LOCC license from Blue Moon, located at 310 Northeast 3rd. We have consideration of Resolution Number 2018-18, a resolution supporting the city of McMinnville's ongoing participation as a member of the Yamhill Affordable Housing Co-op, the YCAHC, Regional Housing Rehabilitation Cooperation, and the Board of Directors, and to appoint the Planning Director Heather Richards as a successor to the previous board member, Ron Palmeroy. And so I'll ask if there would be any member of the council that would like to take anything off the consent agenda this evening? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
It's been moved by Councillor Stassenz and seconded by Councillor Grabkin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed signify by saying nay. This consent agenda has passed unanimously this evening. We are, what? Four to zero. Thank you. This takes us to ordinances this evening. And we have the second reading of ordinance number 5050. And may we consider the matter of ordinance number 5050. Does any councillor object to having the ordinance read by title only? Hearing none. Will the city attorney please read the ordinance into the record?
So this is, I believe, first reading ordinance number 5050, an ordinance relating to the definition of plastic bags amending McMinnville Municipal Code, Chapter 5.36.
Okay. Council discussion on that was presented at our last council meeting. Remi?
Yeah, I just want to... I think we've all gotten a lot of correspondence from the retailers about the cost pass-through that was asked to be added to this amendment. And certainly, there's a great amount of concern out there. And I hear it. I hear it, and I think that the points that have been made, as Roth said, removing this five-cent bag charge would increase their cost between $35,000 and $40,000 a year. Knowing how that can then affect other operations and employment. I know that city staff has already done a lot of work going back and revising this and revising it again and bringing it back. But I am uncomfortable with the removal of the five-cent cost pass-through.
Thank you, Remi. Other comments? Wendy?
I'd like... I agree with Councillor Grabkin. I feel like it would be a step backwards from the perspective of what we're trying to do with the ordinance. The feedback was excellent. The information provided was very good and thorough. And the experience of other communities has shown us that the five-cent, required five-cent, keeps the motivation where it needs to be and also helps the businesses to be able to cover the costs of those. So I think with all of the data we've gotten and the feedback we've gotten, I would be in favor of not changing that element of the ordinance.
Okay. Thank you, Wendy. Any comments?
Obviously, I'm in favor of removing that five-cent mandate. And the main reason for that is, you know, I just don't feel that we, as a government body, should be dictating how somebody should do business, whether that business or certain of those businesses are in favor of that or against that. I just think that should be up to the business themselves to decide how they're doing business. I'm not saying that they can't charge for it. I would just like them to have that option. And as far as the expense numbers that have been thrown out and how that can affect operations, I just have pause with that. You know, you probably typically fit $50 to $80 in a single-use paper bag. And you know, at five cents, we're talking a margin of 1/10 of 1% into their cost of goods. So I just don't see how that's going to sink the ship for a large retailer like Ross, which... I mean, to be honest, I don't think I've gotten a plastic bag in there before this ban in the last 10 years. They've always given out paper bags. So I don't see how it's a different... Differentiation in their cost structure in their McMinnville store. The city of Manzanita passed the ordinance after we did. They didn't put a five-cent charge in there. I know in public affairs testimony that's been submitted to our inboxes, they all cite Portland and how the amount of plastic... Or amount of paper bags after the ban went up 450%-ish. You know, being a business owner and entrepreneurship is all about, you know, out of necessity comes innovation. So if it really costs them eight to 12 cents for a paper bag, they can incentivize people to bring their reusable bags by giving a rebate back if they do bring it. They could train their staff to not bag up a box of Dayquil in a brand-new bag, you know, ask the customer to carry it out. There's lots of business practices that could reduce the overhead costs that they're stating of $35,000 to $40,000 without having us mandate on all the other businesses that don't have a problem with it, you know? So I think that should be up to the freedom of the business owner and their boards to decide what they want to do. And I'll stand firm on that. And I think I would have brought this up to that point if it wasn't my third council meeting that we voted on this.
Yeah.
Councillor Garvin, may I ask you a question? When this originally went through, you were adamant about attaching the five-cent, the mandatory charge. I think it was... I remember at the time that you spoke passionately that you thought it was important that that was part of the ordinance. What's shifted for you in that time?
What I talked about was that it should be mandated for everybody. If it's only five cents and it's a general reminder, it should be mandated for everybody and for everything. Like, it's a level playing field. So that's what I spoke to at the time. But reflecting back on it, and I would agree that I did say that, but reflecting back on it, I think that the business owner should and that manager of that independent store should have the option to do that. And I've been asked that by management, large and small, in this town. I've been asked that by cashiers from large and small retailers in this town. I've been asked that from citizens. I have testimony in my inbox from citizens. And I just feel that it's not our place as a government body to say, "This is how you have to do business."
Sal?
Well, first, Adam, thank you, Councillor Garvin, for bringing the issue back up for reconsideration. I think that anytime you have an opportunity to speak into a microphone, that's a good thing to do. No, I appreciate you bringing this issue back to the attention of the council. I think it's good to evaluate the reasons for making the decisions that you did. I wasn't on the council at the time. I wasn't familiar with the policy when you made the suggestion. And having had a chance to kind of reflect on the policy, hear the testimony from folks both for and against, it seems to me that the policy is working as the council intended. So my view is that we need to tighten up only the language related to single-use plastic bags and leave the rest of the statute unchanged.
Thank you, Sal. Although I don't vote on this, especially tonight, because, well, we are even. But, Adam, I appreciate when you brought it up because I think this is one of the topics I've received more comments in over the last year and a half. And my feeling, I think, was more towards the clerks that had to put up with the few that were very adamant that this was wrong. But with the recology presentation that we had at our last meeting and to see how recyclables are going to be much more difficult to recycle, given what's happening worldwide, I remember in about a six-month period, we had a drawer full of non-reusable bags. It just grew. And we'd use it for various other things, okay? It wasn't a single purpose once we got them home. But in some form or fashion, they would always end up in the garbage when we were done. I think of the 14,000 households in McMinnville. And if I, in six months, with two members of my family, had a drawer full, and you think of 14,000 doing the same, what we're saving our landfills is tremendous. And, you know, I know that for many, it is a little burdensome. I go into the store and I forget. But you know what? I've got my bags out in the car. And so I just keep everything in the cart and go out and put them in my bags in the car. And then my wife thinks I did it right. Yeah, she knows. She knows my weaknesses, okay? But I can tell you, as a household, we support it. And I think it's just a responsible thing that we need to do. I think by eliminating the five cents, we take some of the teeth out of the ordinance. And then the thing that really struck me this last week is we received three letters of support from surf riders. I think I had an opportunity to talk to Sean Miller of Miller Public Relations on behalf of the Northwest Grocers Association that was in support of leaving it the way it was. And then tonight at the dais, we each have a letter from Roth's that talked about they pride themselves on giving great customer service, but they also are stewards of the environment. And so for those types of things, I think we're headed in the right direction. I think the clarifications that we've made about the bag and the thickness, the mill, is appropriate. But to include the five cent being at the discretion of the retailer, I can't support that either. So go ahead, Remi.
I would like to say to the grocers that are in the room, I assume there are grocers in the room, that, you know, one tactic that I would love to see is employing an already reusable resource that you have plenty of in your stores, which are the boxes that your goods come in, similar to the way that Cash &amp; Carry or even Costco have a box bin outside Cash &amp; Carry. There's no bag options in those stores, period. You grab an already-used resource outside the door, and it gets reused inside. And that would be wonderful to see at a lot of our retailers and would eliminate the consternation that people may be feeling at the cash register as well.
Thank you, Remi. Any further discussion at the dais? If not, let's open it up to public comment. I have two individuals that have turned in public comment cards. Stephen Iverson, if you'd come up and address the council. Again, we have... Again, we have three minutes, and it's good to see you, Stephen.
Okay, thank you. Steve Iverson, 1033 Southwest Courtney Lane Drive, McMinnville. And I'm a member of the Zero Waste Group here in town. And so speaking for Zero Waste on this issue, we applaud the council and staff for their effort to clarify the definition of reusable checkout bag because we have seen that the original wording has caused some confusion in implementation of the ordinance by the stores. We also compliment the council for their foresight in choosing from the very beginning to prohibit purely plastic bags of any type at checkout. That's a very unusual feature for this city compared to other cities. This was an unexpected pleasant surprise to us. As a result, customer behavior has been strongly directed toward use of what we can truly consider reusable bags. However, it was an unpleasant surprise to us that the proposed clarifications via ordinance 5050 have been upstaged by a reworking, pardon me for the somewhat dramatic language, but in the reworking to make the mandatory five cent charge for paper bags an optional charge. We strenuously object to making this change. You have in your packet the letters from Surf Rider, which is a current letter, and the 2016 letter from the Northwest Grocery Association, which was done during the process here in McMinnville of developing with the council the ordinance and then pushing it through the public hearings and all that. So, and you saw that both letters strongly support the mandatory paper bag charge of at least five percent. Now, as an aside, Surf Rider and Northwest Grocery Association were partners with the city of Corvallis in the development of the ordinance there in Corvallis. And so since Corvallis was a primary contact of ours during the development of our ordinance here, that's the reason Surf Rider and Northwest Grocery Association are so interested in what goes on here in McMinnville. They do not want to see backtracking just as much as we don't want to see it. So we have two major reasons for supporting a paper bag charge of at least five cents. And this is something that Ross has spoken to. It costs stores more to provide a paper bag than a simple t-shirt plastic bag. And thus, it compensates the store for the additional cost and directs the charge to those customers who are using the paper bags. And let's remember, it's the store that gets the money, not the government, like some people think. Store keeps the five cent charge. And it provides a gentle, not too punitive, push to the customer to remember to bring usable bags when shopping. This change in behavior is the all-important ingredient in the making of a civil society where we act together to improve our lives. And here's a third reason that I just thought of that I didn't write down, but it gives businesses top cover. Is three minutes up?
Yeah, we've hit three minutes, Steve.
It gives the businesses top cover, saying, you know, this is the law and the customers, you know, have to deal with it everywhere in town.
Thank you so very much. We now have Pat Angland. Pat, if you'd come up, and we'll give you three minutes.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hello, I'm Pat Angland. I made the print big enough that I can probably do without my glasses, but I'm going to try with. Thank you very much for having me here this evening to speak a little bit. And I'm going to repeat things that you've read, repeat things Steve had said. I know, you know, it's stuff you've probably already thought about before. So, I live at 218 Northwest Seventh Street in McMinnville. I've been here since 1992. I am a homeowner, taxpayer, voter, former business owner, and a grandma. And it is in the last role that I approach you tonight. Thanks to the city staff and councilors for being willing to listen to my comments regarding the proposed ordinance 5050 and amendment to the bag at better ordinance 5018, which you wrote and enacted in 2017. This was a forward-thinking piece of writing since it made us the sixth city in Oregon to begin to deal with the problem of plastic. Right now, there is an estimated three hundred bags used for each person in the United States every year. I'm going to begin by plucking from the letter from Surf Rider, mentioned twice already. They stated, according to a published report following the city of Portland's first year of plastic bag ban implementation, where no fee was applied, paper bag use increased, as you mentioned, and they say four ninety-one percent. And I have to ask, where did all those bags go? When the families finished up shopping, were the bags used in their homes, recycled, which is less efficient with the resources than never having been used? Or did those paper bags end up in the landfill? Our city cited sustainability as the purpose for writing the ordinance, and prudent use of paper products is a reasonable part of that goal. Also, if businesses are giving out increased numbers of paper bags, their profit and loss statements will begin to show this. Won't customers eventually experience price increases? Large barrels for plastic bag collection greet us as we enter several of the grocery stores. In a recent interview with a local store manager, he reported that they are filling up much more slowly since September 1st, 2017. Congratulations, city of McMinnville. But will we begin seeing paper bag recycling bins at the store entrances? Overuse of paper bags was never the goal of the ordinance that you passed. I agree that the bag definition needed to be clarified, and I applaud the council for taking on this task. Keeping it clear and logical for community members is important. Now, everyone knows that there will be no plastic bags given to consumers at checkout. This is in line with the intent of the original ordinance, I believe. An amendment was needed for this purpose, but to change the optional charge for paper bags does not fulfill your stated purpose of a sustainable McMinnville if the city of Portland is any indication. I conclude by borrowing some words from Jeb Blandine from his Friday column, where he says, quote, "Speaking for myself, the mandatory five cent charge for paper bags doesn't seem like a massive assault on human rights. It's more like a gentle reminder of society's need to reduce excess consumption of resources while protecting against proliferation of environmental pollution," end quote.
Pat, we've hit our three minutes.
Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
For giving me a thoughtful look.
Okay. Okay, those were the two that we had that had signed to speak to us this evening. We're going to now go back for any more discussion among the council. I think we have an ordinance in front of us, 5050, that in Section 2, 5.36.040, we've made changes that indicate that the retail establishment may charge the customer. Do we have, how do we want to address that as a council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I would move to approve ordinance 5050, but not as presented this evening, but rather by keeping the language in 5.36.020, defining a plastic bag, but not inclusive of the language that was proposed to be altered in Section 5.36.040 or 5.36050, and instead leaving those sections as they were originally written.
I'll second that. And so we have Remy, who has moved, and Sal has seconded it. David, with those as presented or amended, can we move forward with this?
So as I'm hearing the motion, it would be to approve ordinance 5050 by only moving forward with Section 1 of Exhibit 1 and not moving forward with Section 2 or Section 3, those proposed changes?
Correct.
And that would be as the ordinance was proposed to the council at its meeting on April 10th?
Right, so this would mimic the reading of the April 10th meeting.
I am comfortable that the council could move forward tonight with that if it chose to.
Okay. And so with that amendment, ordinance 5050, we'll ask the city recorder to poll the council.
Well, we'll need a second reading on that, so we'll need a, there was a motion to move that forward from a first reading to a second reading, so it would be a voice vote on that issue.
Okay. So to move ordinance 5050 to a second reading, let's, all those in favor, please indicate with a saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so let's move forward with the second reading.
So this is a second reading of ordinance number 5050, an ordinance relating to the definition of plastic bags, amending McMinnville Municipal Code, Chapter 5.36.
Okay. And so again, I will ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number 5050 as amended.
So moved.
And a second. Wendy moved and Remy seconded. Let's ask the city recorder to poll the council.
Counselor Dropkin?
Aye.
Counselor Garvin?
Aye.
Counselor Peralta?
Aye.
Counselor Stassenz?
Aye.
We've had the roll call, and so ordinance number 5050 is adopted by a vote of four to zero. Thank you. That takes us to our next ordinance, 5051. The first reading with a possible second reading of ordinance 5051. Does any councilor object to having the ordinance read by title only? Hearing none. We'll have the city attorney please read the ordinance into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the first reading of ordinance number 5051, an ordinance relating to special use permits for city parks, revising the fine schedule for violation of park rules, and amending McMinnville Municipal Code, Chapter 12.36.
Thank you, David. We'll call on the Parks and Recreation Director and Susan and Ann to address the council. Welcome, you two.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Ann Lane is here with me today. She's part of our management team in Parks and Rec and has been really helping on this a lot, so may be able to weigh in and answer some questions you have. For a little bit of background, we came to you at a February work session to talk about some negative behaviors that we're experiencing in some of our community parks. We had been approached as a city about potentially hosting the Walnut City Music Festival at City Park and came to our attention that we have a barrier in our ordinances, which is a current ban on alcohol in all city parks. We also talked about cleaning up our ordinance a little bit to make sure we have the appropriate delegated authority for doing some administrative rules for permitting large events in our community parks. And then we also talked a little bit about noise ordinance waivers that might need to happen as part of that. So you gave us some head nods in some direction, and we prepared an ordinance and have brought that forward to you tonight. The ordinance does remove the alcohol ban in City Park under certain conditions. So if someone comes through and gets the appropriate permit from us, they would be able to sell alcohol at City Park. We did include a framework for permitting, delegating administrative authority in there. We also made sure to authorize the ability for us to collect fees for these large events. And then we also took the opportunity to update the fines that we have in our park ordinance. And then we did, I pointed out in the staff report that we did not include anything related to the noise ordinance waivers. And I want to apologize because I actually didn't understand how the noise ordinance waivers worked. And in fact, David did include a little bit in the ordinance about that because he noticed an inconsistency in the language. And so I'll turn it over to him so he can walk you through the part about the noise ordinance that we included in there.
Thank you. So there are noises addressed in a few different places in the McMinnville City Code. There's a general prohibition against noise from phonographs and other types of antiquated noise-making devices. I don't even recall how far back it dates, but generally speaking, in order to amplify music from any such conveyance, you would need a permit from the city council. A newer, relatively speaking, ordinance governs the Parks Department, and it does provide, currently, without any particular restrictions in place, that the Parks Director, unless otherwise approved by the Director, no person within a park shall use or operate any noise-producing machine, device, or instrument in a manner that, in the judgment of the authorized city employee, can be heard beyond fifty feet and/or substantially diminishes the ability of other park area visitors to enjoy the park or subject persons occupying residences adjacent to or near the park in inconvenience, annoyance, or alarm. So that language that's in the Parks ordinance as it exists today already gives the Director authority to grant permission to use noise-producing machines, devices, or instruments in manners that would otherwise be heard beyond the boundaries of the park or possibly cause inconvenience or annoyance. What we've done within the permit section for events is I've added some language, if I can find it here, that would allow the Parks Director as a part of a permit issued for one of these special uses to authorize, without it having necessarily to come to council, to clear up the confusion in the other portion of the ordinance that says variances in noise prohibitions have to come to council for special permit. To clarify that as a part of one of these permits, the Parks Director could issue a permit so long as the noise was contained between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m. And if it were to fall outside of those boundaries, then it would have to come to council under the default ordinance.
Okay. Thank you, David. Susan?
Yep, thank you. And that is on page 53 of your packet, Item C2 is the noise section that David just reviewed. Ann and I have looked at the OLCC regulations that would apply to these types of events and think that they are certainly well-equipped to ensure that the concerns that came up last time about making sure that there is proper identification of areas where alcohol is served and that there is no passing of alcohol and that kind of thing, those measures are already in place with OLCC, and we feel good about that. They would, anybody getting a permit that included alcohol would need to comply with those, and the state has a system for permitting that. And then I wanted to point out on that same page, 53, I spoke with two neighbors of City Park today, one who was very supportive of events happening down there and one who was less supportive about events happening down there, and talking about the noise impacts. And so I want to point out the criteria, B2, I think this is key and important to have in there that we would be able to issue a permit if the proposed activity will not have an unreasonably adverse impact from noise litter or traffic on the park or their surrounding neighborhood. So as we talked about last time, this is kind of a, we're testing the waters about having these large community events and attracting some more positive programming down to our parks. But if we did start to have these and they exceeded the capacity of the neighborhood and we started to receive a lot of complaints about noise or impacts or other things, we have the ability in the ordinance there to say, "We've had enough events for the summer down there. We're not going to allow anymore." And I think that's a critical piece of this as we go into working with the neighbors and determining what the appropriate amount of crowd and noise and other impacts they would be potentially receiving down there as part of these large event permits.
Any questions for Susan or Ann? Sal?
As part of the changes, you had pretty significant increases in the penalty matrix. Basically, all the fines got marked up to between sixty percent and four times what they were. And I, this was probably mentioned, but when was the last time this statute was updated?
This ordinance was last updated in 1999, is my understanding. So I believe that those fines are actually already in place. We're just making them consistent. Is that correct, David?
So, yeah, Susan is correct that that particular fine schedule was adopted nineteen years ago. And in going back and looking at that, it was based on the schedule of violations, fines that were generally adopted statewide for ordinance or code violation, similar to traffic infractions being an example as well of a violation fine amount. The amounts that are being proposed in here for the Class A, B, C, and D violations are consistent with what the 2018 fine numbers, schedule of fines on violations are. There are maximum fine amount. That's not necessarily the fine amount that would be levied, but it's the same for a traffic ticket. There's a... levied, but it's the same for a traffic ticket, there's a, for a certain traffic ticket, the maximum fine that could be assessed against an individual could be $1,000, but the presumptive fine is only $265, and there's a minimum fine also set out in the schedule. Our goal is to be consistent in our ordinance, both here and in other portions of our city code, where we're assessing fines for code violations with that state schedule of fees.
So the maximum fine you said in statute, and then the effective fine is like an administrative rule somewhere?
So when somebody is issued a citation for violating a park rule, they're cited into municipal court, so they go before a judge, same as if you're cited for a traffic violation, you're cited into municipal court, you go before the judge, the judge will then make the determination, first, of guilt or innocence, or you may enter a plea, and then there's a presumptive fine schedule that's also set out in the statute for those types of fines that the judge goes off of. So typically, for a first-time offense, you're going to see a lower fine. For multiple offenses, you'll see those fines getting levied at the higher end of the scale, based on the discretion of the judge and what's necessary to deter the conduct.
So the effective fine is set in statute at the state level, and then what you're doing is enumerating the actual amount, maximum amount in our city code? Is that, am I understanding that right?
So I'm probably not explaining it very well. We, for violations of city ordinances, and as a city, we're authorized to identify conduct that's unlawful and to set a fine amount for those. Our goal is to set our fine amounts at a level that is consistent with what's happening statewide for violation fine amounts. So we're, when we set in our code, the maximum fine for an A, B, C, or D violation is $2,000, $1,500, $250, that matches exactly with the fine amount in ORS 153019, that sets out a maximum violation, a Class A violation fine of $2,000, maximum Class B violation of $1,000, C violation is $500. So we're borrowing from what the state has done.
I get all of that. What I don't get is where you're getting the effective number from, because you said initially that's set in statute, but actually it's not set in this statute, is it set somewhere else?
No, and so that is, again, it's at the discretion of the judge. When the person goes before the judge, the judge is the one who ultimately sets that fine amount.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that for me.
Okay, go ahead, more, Susan?
Nope, we're done.
Any questions for Susan or Ann? Okay, I don't see that we have any public comment cards for this ordinance, and so let's have a discussion among the council. What direction would you like to go on this?
Can I bring my boombox to the party? Then I'm in support of it.
I think it's really well-done. I asked all my questions when you first came in to propose the idea with regards to what it's going to look like, and I think you fulfilled this in ordinance form this time, so thank you for all your work on this, and I'm looking forward to seeing the impact, hopefully a positive impact for the parks and the community, so thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Any comments, Dan?
I just thank you for well-put-together, and I like that you put the provision in there that, you know, you guys can use discretion on the impact of the neighborhood, because that's the only negative feedback I've gotten is from longtime residents and how it could affect what the normal is. But I definitely like the idea of opening our parks up to some bigger venues and really making it a living room for the city.
Again, Susan, thank you for the research into the OLCC. I know we had quite a little bit of discussion of how we would be able to enclose that area. I think that was a concern that some of us had, and that families and kids are running around, but you addressed that. So I'll ask for a motion to pass ordinance number 5051 to a second reading.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved by Wendy and seconded by Remy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. And so we'll ask ordinance number 5051 passes on the first reading unanimously, so we'll have the city attorney read the ordinance once again by title only.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 5051, an ordinance relating to special use permits for city parks, revising the fine schedule for violation of park rules, and amending McMinnville Municipal Code, Chapter 12.36.
Thank you, David. I'll ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number 5051.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Adam and seconded by Remy. We will ask the city recorder to poll the council.
Councilor Drapkin?
Aye.
Councilor Garvin?
Aye.
Councilor Peralta?
Aye.
Councilor Stassenz?
Aye.
After the roll call, city or ordinance number 5051 has been adopted by a vote of four to zero. Thank you. This takes us to the next ordinance. We'll have the first reading with a possible second reading. We will now consider the matter of ordinance number 5052. Does any counselor object to having the ordinance read by title only? Hearing none, we'll have our city attorney read ordinance number 5052 for the first reading.
This is the first reading of ordinance number 5052, an ordinance amending Title 17 zoning of the McMinnville City Code, specific to Chapter 17.06 and Chapter 17.62, to update definitions and the regulation of non-conforming signs.
Okay, thank you. I will call on Associate Planner Chuck Dornell to make a presentation to us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors. So this is an ordinance to consider the non-conforming signs section of the sign ordinance. So I'll just provide a little bit of background on how we got here, for everyone's reminder. So back in 2008, the city adopted the sign ordinance, ordinance 4900, that created sign regulations and also included the amortization program, which required that all non-conforming signs with the new standards be brought into compliance by a certain date in the future. That deadline was December 31, 2017, which was a one-year extension of the original timeframe, and so city staff moved forward with their, with the research and the beginning of the enforcement process of that. We completed the research, and we sent out notices of potential sign non-compliance in June of 2017, and those went out to 140 property owners. And after that point, we did receive some business community and legal opposition to the amortization program in general. We extended the deadline again to allow for another year and a further review of the legality of the amortization program. That analysis and the assessment of the risk involved with the existing program and other options were presented to council, and we received direction to explore some other options, so that's what we're before you tonight with those amendments. The planning commission held a public hearing on this item at the March meeting, and they recommended approval of the amendments that you'll be seeing tonight. So the proposed amendments, in big picture, are to remove the amortization process from the code, and also to, in place of that, introduce other triggers and enforcement methods that would result in non-conforming signs coming into compliance. The triggers that are being proposed are related to changes to the property or investments that are being made, and then the updates to the non-conforming sign would be required at that point in time. It really provides more of a nexus between the improvements being made and the required updates to the signs, which is a balance with the community opposition that we received, but still achieves the result of getting some of the non-conforming signs updated over time. So specifically, these are the triggers that we're proposing. There's five of them, and I'll walk through each one of them in a little more detail. So the first is that any alteration of a non-conforming sign that requires a building permit, this trigger actually already exists in the code, but we're proposing to keep it there. An alteration would be the change in the size, shape, method of illumination, construction or supporting structure of the sign. So anything that changes the physical form of the sign would require that sign to come into compliance. Things that wouldn't be an alteration would be simply changing out the face in a cabinet sign, you know, if a new tenant comes into a building, if it doesn't change the structural components of the sign. The Oregon Building Code requires a permit for any change to signage that will impact wind load or structural load, so those are things that change basically the size or the weight of the cabinet on top of the sign. Those things would require a permit.
So, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Sorry. So, oh, what happens if somebody goes through and alters the sign without a building permit? Maybe they're not aware they needed a building permit to alter their sign, and now they've just made an improvement or a change to the sign that they already didn't change in the nine years that they had to change the sign? What's the repercussion if you still have a non-conforming sign after altering your sign?
So that would become like a violation of the zoning ordinance at that point, and so staff and the city would move forward with enforcement of that violation. So they would violate this provision of the code, and would be, you know, a citation to appear in court, which is our current process now, and that would require the update at that point in time.
Just to clarify, it's actually two violations. One, they didn't get a building permit that they were required to get, so we would enforce on that, and then, once they came through and got the building permit, they would have to become compliant with the code, so we would require that.
Okay. And I had a question, so with regards to the supporting structure of a sign, like, what about maintenance of the supporting structure of the sign? At what point does that trigger?
If it's not changing the structure, I would say it probably wouldn't meet the definition of the alteration.
You could have to replace a footing or something like that, which would be the supportive structure.
Yeah, replacement of anything would be an alteration, I would say. If it's a change to the supporting structure, you know, a new footing or something would be subject to the building code at this time, and would require a building permit, so that would be an alteration.
Okay.
So the second trigger that we're proposing, so the rest of these would be new triggers that would be in place, would be the alteration of a structure or building on the property that requires a building permit and a certificate of occupancy. So this would be kind of changes in use of a property. Again, the Oregon Building Code regulates changes in occupancy. Certificate of occupancy are issued when there's new construction on a property, so if a new building is constructed that requires a certificate of occupancy. If there's a change of use on the property in an existing building, so if a building is a, you know, a commercial structure, but it's an office and it changes to a restaurant, that's a different type of use, that would trigger the non-conforming sign to be updated.
But like, restaurant to restaurant, just with the change of ownership, as long as it stays a restaurant, then that would not require?
Correct.
Okay.
Sorry, can I ask another question? Why does it say "building permit and a certificate of occupancy" instead of "or a"?
So we proposed this as a means to kind of get to changes of use of the property, so like the mayor just suggested, if you need a building permit to do a renovation on your restaurant, but you're not changing the use, it wouldn't trigger this. It would be, you know, larger changes in scale to the property. Those types of changes require the certificate of occupancy.
The intent of the code is that it needs to have some sort of proportionality in terms of a trigger, and a building permit, an electrical permit, a plumbing permit, any of those are considered legally building permits, and so someone could come in with a $100 building permit, and then we would be requiring them to change out a $150,000 sign. So by putting it into this category where it's a building permit and a certificate of occupancy, it's then a decision-making process for the property owner as to, you know, a tenant's coming online, that's a new tenant, that's changing a significant use in an existing vanilla shell, or they're building a new pad, but that's all income-producing, and so they're making a business decision of the long-term income-producing activity here versus the changing out of the sign over here.
And that's why one of the other triggers further down is about if there's a specific amount of work being done. Okay, thank you.
And again, it's keeping in that same box of trying to get to a place where we have triggers that will achieve what the intent of the community is, but also keeping it fair and proportionate.
Okay. Okay. Although, although the argument for not bringing the signs into compliance over this very long period of time has mostly been that it's an unfair financial burden, but then any of these other permits that you mentioned would almost always be for improvements.
So the current argument is, is that we are requesting a change in the property that's not being triggered through any sort of change by the property owner or the business, which is a typical land use process. So a typical land use process, you want to do something with your property, you bring it into code, compliance with code. And so the argument is with the amortization program, there's no sort of trigger that's saying you need to bring this into code, it's just saying, over this time period, you need to do it, and that was the challenge, and the legal council can work through that process. What we're recommending is, in terms of other land use processes that all have triggers that say, "If you do this, you bring it into compliance with code," and the "do this" is usually in some sort of box of reasonableness, and that follows from federal law, state law, down to local law, that we have triggers that say, "If you do this, then you bring it into compliance," and we're trying to bring as many triggers to play that we feel that we can legally bring to play, and also have it in that proportionality piece.
Okay, and why was the non-compliance previously not a violation of code? Why was, why were we not able to enforce it?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
So, previously, I was asking about what would happen if somebody was to be non-compliant, and...
So if I, if I, you know, probably not understanding the question, but if I understand the question to be, if somebody had come in and built a sign in the last eight years that didn't meet these requirements, we could have gone in and, if it had not been permitted to be built outside of the height limits and the square footers limits, we could have absolutely enforced that against that sign. We're talking about signs that were in place, lawfully constructed at the time that they were constructed.
Yeah, and I'm also talking about those signs. What I'm asking is, what was not enforceable in the previous ordinance, which required them to update the sign over that eight-year period? What was not enforceable about that, that kind of has now landed us where we are here? I mean, I understand that after we got to the, kind of to the end of that, and we did an extension, another extension, then legal challenges came, but in that initial eight-year period, why was, what made, was that enforceable?
So during that initial eight-year period, there were, and Heather can probably address this, there were very limited triggers in the ordinance that required a sign to be brought into compliance. Essentially, nearly all of the eggs were put in the basket of, "We're going to give them eight years, and then they have to comply," without, in from triggers existing within the code along the way. And that's, a number of these
I think I got.
triggers that are being proposed now could have been built into the ordinance 10 years ago, but were not.
So trigger number one is an existing trigger, and when it was triggered, signs were brought into compliance, and we do have examples of those over that eight-year period.
All right.
We're now adding a lot more, because that's so narrow in scope, it wasn't really achieving the intent.
Okay, all right.
And, Remy, that's why we had the amortization period, is because we had a lot of discussion, and it was a very hot topic, and so to soften the blow, we did that amortization schedule, and then when we got closer to that, then there was a lot of dialogue again.
Okay. I don't think I'll have more questions, but...
It's okay.
She can't promise, though.
I can't promise, yeah.
All right. So the next couple of triggers are related to that proportionality. So these would be changes to a property that aren't necessarily a change in use, but are larger in scale and more proportionate to the, or what would be required in updating the sign as well. So the first one would be an addition or expansion of 25% or more of the overall square footage of a structure or building on the property.
Oh, oh, fine.
This one would cover the larger expansions. This language here was a question that came up at the planning commission of what requires a permit. It's basically any new construction, enlargement, change, repair to a building. And the size of those existing buildings and the size of the expansion is all checked during the building permit process, and that's where we would determine that.
So what about parking lots?
If it requires, well, no, this one, this one wouldn't apply to parking lots. This one's written as expansions to the structure or the building. So the next trigger I'll talk about may, could be triggered by that.
Okay.
So the next one is a change to a property, any change to a property that requires a permit, of which the value of the building permit is 25% or more of the assessed, or the real market value of the buildings on the property within a 24-month period. And we would determine the value. It's all publicly accessible through the Yammell County Assessor's Office. This is a similar trigger as is used with required driveway and sidewalk improvements to a property when new construction is occurring, the same formula. The planning commission introduced the, within a 24-month period, as an amendment during the public hearing, based on some testimony that people may try to spread out their improvements to avoid hitting that 25%. So that time period was put on there, which again, can be, is tracked through our building permit process and our system. It'd be easy to monitor that. So this, if a large expansion to a parking lot was proposed, and that value hit that trigger, that that could trigger the nonconforming sign.
But couldn't you also argue that parking lots aren't, I mean, it's not a building? I mean, if I was to do a, you know, if I was to repave here, I mean, I feel like I could also make an argument that that would not, that it wouldn't be triggered?
On the other trigger related to the building or the structure, I don't think that would apply. On this one, I think it would because this is any change, it's written as any change to a property that requires a permit. So we have plumbing permits for parking lots generally associated with the stormwater drainage system and connections to storm sewer. So I would say this one would apply no matter what the change is.
Thank you.
Okay. I had a question about the previous one. When you have, when you're talking about 25% of a structure, so in the shopping complexes that have multiple structures, but they have one, that one sign that's shared by all of them. So if one of those structures, the, has a renovation that's over 25% of that structure, then that main monument sign would need to be brought up to date?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
My question relates to proportionality. So imagine you have a decent-sized strip mall in town, and they have a change in occupancy and a renovation at a small place within that overall structure. As I'm reading this, that change of occupancy is going to trigger a sign change, even if it's a fairly small percentage of the overall shopping center? Is that, is that accurate? Once you have the occupancy trigger?
In that case, it could be.
So my concern would be something like the Safeway Shopping Center bringing in a new tenant into an 800-square-foot or 1,000-square-foot property and then having to make a big change to that sign. I mean, to bring it into conformance makes sense, but it doesn't seem to me that that meets the goal of proportionality.
Isn't that the intent, though? I mean, we're talking about nonconforming signs, signs that there was a polite request to spend almost 10 years bringing into compliance, that action was not taken on...
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Remy. Go ahead.
No, no, I'm just, I'm saying, isn't that the intent?
I agree with that. But the, as I'm understanding the legal challenges, if we adopt an ordinance that is not, in fact, proportional to the renovation being done, meaning that if the sign change we demand far exceeds the cost of whatever the renovation is that's unrelated to the sign change, that that could create a legal problem for us. So rather than kind of go down the same rabbit hole, I'm just asking the question whether we can meet, excuse me, whether we can meet the proportionality concern or whether that is a concern, I guess that's my question.
A certificate of occupancy is not an abnormal trigger for land use processes or any process to bring a site up to code. Where we had discussion of proportionality is when we were talking about the expansions of certain projects or tenant improvements that are, you know, where the overall building permit value is, you know, 25% of the site itself.
I, I'll be honest, I don't think I've had my question on that answered well enough tonight for me to vote on this. I'm very supportive of the idea of create, you know, going down this path, but I want to make sure we do it and don't go down the same kind of rabbit hole we did the last time.
So can I clarify, Heather? I mean, a certificate of occupancy happens, like, if you have a space that you're taking one retail tenant, and they leave, and another retail tenant comes in, they're not necessarily going to do renovations that require a certificate of occupancy. Their certificate of occupancy is when you change it, you need a building permit to make significant changes to the space, to totally renovate it, and then you need a certificate of occupancy at the end. So you can change tenants that use the same space and just do different things, cosmetic things to the walls that have similar types of tenants without requiring a certificate of occupancy from the city.
Okay. And that's a choice that that property owner's going to make if they want to swap out a bookstore for a restaurant or a bar or what have you, and it requires a renovation and major changes and a new certificate of occupancy. They undertake that change, knowing that it's going to trigger a requirement to bring their nonconforming sign into conformance. Well, I guess I understand that. Proportion, I mean, we talked about proportionality, and I'm mindful of not wanting to provide legal advice from the dais here. But at the risk of that, the proportionality discussion is generally evaluated in terms of the, an exaction of property. So the well-known case of Dolan versus City of Tigard, where a change in use on the property or not change in use, an expansion of the property, triggered a requirement that they dedicate certain property for a path. And through that analysis, there was a determination, a discussion of whether or not what was being exacted from them was, you know, in terms of a taking, actual taking of that property for public use, was roughly proportional to the changes that were being proposed on the property. When we're talking about bringing a nonconforming sign into conformance, yeah, I'm not going to, I'm going to back myself off and not take that conversation further. But I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm just going to back myself off. And I'll provide, and if counsel is uncomfortable moving forward with this tonight and wants a legal opinion on this, I can provide that to you in executive session. Okay. Without potential plaintiffs sitting in the audience. I would, I would feel more comfortable delaying action myself tonight and getting some of the concerns that we've received in testimony clarified, as well as my understanding of the legal framework clarified before we take action, because I don't feel fully comfortable that, I'm not fully comfortable.
Why don't we go ahead and finish the presentation, though, Chuck?
So the last trigger being proposed is the abandonment of a nonconforming sign. So this would be, if a sign goes into abandonment, which I'll get into more detail on, our current definition is here on the screen. In reviewing this and as this would be becoming a trigger, we determined that the current definition is somewhat vague and doesn't provide real clear definition of the timeframes for when a sign would become abandoned. So we're proposing to amend the sign and remove the language unused and some of the vagueness in terms of the timeframe, and introduce specific timeframes for when a sign would become considered abandoned. And that would be when a sign that advertises a business or event that has been closed for more than 30 days, or a sign that has been damaged and the repairs are not started within 60 days of the date the sign was damaged, or not completed within 180 days once started. And the planning commission discussed this a little thoroughly and added that last piece in terms of being completed within 180 days. So if we move forward with the proposed amendments, we're also proposing that this definition be updated. To be more clear, as it would become a trigger, it would be something we would need to follow through enforcement on. We want the language to be clear so we can do that. Just to run through some of the public testimony we received, there was a proponent at the public hearing, Doug Curl, on behalf of McMinnville Industrial Promotions, spoke in favor of the proposed amendments. There was some opposition at the public hearing. Four community members provided testimony. That testimony is provided in the planning commission meeting minutes that were in your packet. Kind of varied testimony from one thinking that even the regulations we're proposing are still too strict, some having some frustration that the amortization's being removed, but kind of being in support of the triggers we're proposing still. So a variety of different comments received, and like I said, the testimony specifically is in the minutes in your packet. We did receive some letters of opposition prior to the public hearing and written testimony. We provided those to you in the packet from representatives of the outdoor advertising billboard companies in town, and from the owner of the Mayfair Plaza, who expressed some objections to some of the triggers we're proposing. And we did receive one additional item of testimony. Another letter from Michael Reader just today, similar letter to what he had provided to the planning commission, but this one addressed to the city council. And he also requested a public hearing to be held on the matter so they could provide public testimony. And that request is for council to decide and make a decision on whether you want to schedule a public hearing to provide public testimony on this matter. It's not required at this point if we do move forward with the ordinance, but it is up to the council to decide that. Just wanted to share that request that we received. And the reason we would ask for that is just so we can be fair and notice that there's a public hearing and provide opportunity for anyone that wants to testify, to testify again, if they would like. So at this point, planning commission and staff are recommending approval of the zoning text amendments to council. Ordinance 5052, the language that's in your packet today, includes those, a couple amendments that were discussed by the planning commission at their meeting, which I talked through in my presentation.
Okay. Any questions for Chuck?
You.
Okay. I think the question before us right now is that, again, the planning commission has gone over this thoroughly, has conducted a public hearing. We were able to read the testimonies that was, that were a part of that public hearing. And in that it's a land use matter, the question would be, do we want to have the opportunity to have a public hearing, to hear both sides of the issue from the public? Or do you feel like we've had enough testimony and input into the process up to this time? Sal?
I think we have enough testimony in terms of what people have provided, but I have not yet had a chance to fully deliberate over the, what my legal understanding of it. And so I don't think we need another hearing, but I would like to move, or I would like to suggest that we consider moving the second reading to the next regularly scheduled council meeting, to give us a little time to just stew on it and give citizens a little more time for feedback.
Okay, Sal? Any other comments from the dais?
If we, how do we provide, David, this is a question for you, would that be an executive session on the legal, to have a full legal discussion that meets?
So what I can do, and I'll follow up with Counselor Peralta to make sure that I understand the question. I think I understand it, but I'll follow up with you outside of council to make sure that I am clear. I can put together a legal briefing memo for the council to consider those legal issues in executive session prior to taking action on this at your next council meeting.
Thank you.
And if anybody else has questions they want me to look into this week, would be the time to tell me.
I would appreciate information on that same trigger, but I don't have any extra questions.
Okay. To my right.
I mean, I feel perhaps differently than my fellow counselors here. I, I mean, I, I respect that the city has no desire to get involved in any sort of litigation, and so has taken a very careful, careful look at that in order to avoid that situation. And I always think it's wise to avoid litigation. I'm not familiar with the well-known case of Dolan v. the City of Tigard, but my sense is that the actions, the triggers that are recommended in the rewriting of this ordinance have taken that into consideration and that these are reasonable and well-vetted recommendations. So I personally would feel comfortable moving forward this evening, although I never want to limit anybody their opportunity to gather more information. So I, you know, this has been a challenge, I think, for the business owners. It's been a challenge for city staff and the city council and the community figuring out how to move forward appropriately. And signs and, you know, the aesthetics of what we create and really do and are important in what defines our city. And so I applaud city staff for all of the effort and work that's gone into getting us to this point, and that it's been so considerate of, of those business owners who have not brought their signs into compliance over the last decade. So I think that there's been a lot of good work here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Remy. Any thoughts, Wendy?
I echo what Counselor Grabkin conveyed. I feel like it's been a long process. I really appreciate all the voices that have come to the table and how it's been handled by our planning staff and the thoughtfulness of the process. I think this is a great product. I'm not, I feel like the legal issues have been really well addressed here. I don't have the same questions, but I appreciate the, going through the process of getting questions of all the counselors answered before we make this decision. But I would have been ready to move forward on this tonight, and I have really appreciated the work that you guys have put into it. So, yeah.
Okay. Well, any other comments? Okay, where we're at right now is, I'll ask for a motion to pass ordinance number 5052 to a second reading. Okay? And do I have a motion and a second?
A second.
So it's been moved and seconded that, by Remy and by Wendy, that we move ordinance number 5052 to a second. number 5052 to a second reading, to be held May 8th. What's that?
Second reading to be held May 8th.
On May 8th? Was that the intent?
Or to do it tonight.
I think they were thinking tonight.
You got me. I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable doing it tonight.
That's what I understood. Okay, so let's back up. Wendy, do you feel comfortable this evening?
I'm comfortable. Well, I think that, I think that two of our counselors would like more information, so.
So for the second reading on May 8th?
Okay.
A second.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded that we have the second reading on May 8th. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with an aye? Okay, David, I think we've got some direction and an opportunity to do some clarification, which would be discussed at an executive session on May 8th, as I'm guessing, prior to us taking final action on this.
Yes, sir.
Okay. This evening, reports from counselors on committee, excuse me, Chuck, thank you for your, your diligence in putting that all together, and Heather also. I mean, I know you guys picked this up as it was a hotbed of discussion, and as we've said, it, not only in the planning group, but legally and the whole staff. So thank you for all those efforts that have brought us to where we are this evening. Okay, advice and information, reports from counselors on committee and board assignments. Who'd like to start? Adam?
So we met Wycom Budget, and we're looking at a 3% increase. That's to kind of stay that steady line of increase to absorb these rising costs with healthcare impurs and things like that. And so we, as a board, voted for, for that, and I think we have a hearing on it in June.
Okay.
But that's what it's looking like, is 3% gives us a nice little bump, but not too extreme to where it's, you know, putting constraints on our partners. And so that's what we're looking at for next year.
Great. Sal?
Our committee did not meet, governmental council, so...
Okay. Wendy?
We have not had a meeting for urban renewal, but the big news is Alpine lunch is this Friday, the 27th, from 11:00 to 1:30. So I suggest that everybody come down and celebrate.
Absolutely.
And then our next meeting is the second.
Absolutely. Yeah, we'll have an opportunity to tell the story, recognize volunteers, recognize partners that have worked. And then we have an opportunity to have great lunches at the food carts. And I'll tell you, Jody's done a great job of bringing some unique food carts to the, to the area. I saw that list the other day, and it looks like it's going to be a lot of fun. Remy?
McMinnville Affordable Housing Task Force meets tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. at the planning department.
Great. We had, last Thursday, we had a Parkway committee meeting, and we shared with Parkway that McMinnville, we did sign on to the intent or the letter of support along with, everyone had, had an opportunity to present that, with the exception of Newburgh as of last Thursday. We had an opportunity last Wednesday for the Visit McMinnville Committee to meet. We further really dove into the budget for the upcoming year and, and looked at many, many, what I would call successes with media, but a lot of discussion about what is looking, what things are going to be looking like moving down the road. We also, last, I think it was last Wednesday, had an opportunity to walk the city with a discussion, and Heather was a part of this, with our wayfinding. And we kind of know, we know what our signage is going to look like, and we develop it, have developed it to that point. But we walked the city starting at City Park, the library area, and trying to determine where signage might be, especially informational signage. We tried to figure out the path of least resistance getting from Third Street over to Alpine. And we went many ways. And I think right now, we have a sense that through signage, we'd like to go down Galloway now, which...
The railroad tracks?
Which puts you down by some beautiful homes down that way, and is a straight shot. Going down, going down Irvine, we come to a point where the entrance to Alpine is through private property. And, you know, you don't want to make a public right-of-way, so to speak, through public property, and especially during the crush, where that is so minimal. And so Friday, for anyone on the council, if you can come up with an hour or two after the celebration, we will walk that again with input from anyone that would like to share some thoughts as we prepare to turn that information over to Sea Reach. And I think we are meeting with Sea Reach and coming to some kind of conclusions in August. Is that correct, Heather?
Yeah, Mayor, we've, we've had some internal dialogue. So what's happened is the committee's created a design product, but we need to start really vetting it through our city process. So engineering's taking some looks at it, and our streets department. And so we're working, we're doing that refinement piece right now. Once they're through with that, then we'll bring everyone back together with Sea Reach and talk about next steps.
Good. We had, we had quite a few partners with us from the chamber, from MDA, from URAK. And so it was, it was a good grouping of individuals, and, but it's not so clear-cut that we can look. We also had the engineering department out and our, our people that would help implement that one, and David Renshaw, and I think Dell was with us, and so we got some of their kind of from-the-ground level perspectives, too. Let's go around, and reports from department heads. Chief, Heather, Melissa, David, and the healing Jeff, how are you?
I don't know if I'm healing or not.
He's been coughing up a storm.
Sorry about that. I'll be out of the office for most of next week. I'll be assisting the Metro Council in hiring a new deputy chief operating officer for about a day and a half plus travel. There's a, there are a couple of track meets next week, and I've also got an ICMA regional conference that's up the gorge in Skamania, Washington. So I won't be in the office much next week.
Thank you, Jeff. This evening, the next thing we have is an executive session under ORS 192-6602D to conduct deliberations with persons designated to carry out labor negotiations. We're not going to close this meeting because we anticipate that we'll return from executive session and come back here to take care of some business. So would the council and those that have been invited to the executive session move to the conference room?